I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Village Board for November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen. Can we please all rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Village Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President DeSimone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Jaworska?
Here.
Trustee Lomax is absent. Trustee Penacola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's... Hi, we have a corner. It's been a long time.
First off, Grand Subaru of Bensonville participated in the Be Well Bensonville Walkathon and Family Fest on September sixteenth. In addition to the prizes donated by Grand Subaru, their general manager Ryan pledged to give an additional five dollars for every signature obtained on their Why Be Well wall. Two hundred thirteen signatures were collected, and Ryan is now donating one thousand and sixty-five dollars to the youth coalition. So, on behalf of... Bobby, would you like to introduce?
I was able to, I met Ryan at an event earlier this year where we both participated that happened at the Park District. In some conversations about the history of Grand Subaru in town, Ryan expressed an interest in being more involved with the village. He mentioned some programs that Subaru had done, but specifically wanted to do some things in his words that were better directed towards the village itself, how he could help the residents of Bensonville. I mentioned the Be Well Bensonville Walkathon and Family Fest, kind of suggested that might be a good place for him to come out, see some of the events we do in the village, and he expressed an interest in having a vendor registration at a table there. When he showed up, they had turned it into an enormous Why Be Well signature board. He pledged an additional five dollars, as you mentioned, for everybody that signed the board. They donated additional prizes to the participants, and with two hundred and thirteen signatures, we were able to garner an extra one thousand and sixty-five dollars from Grand Subaru from the event. So, at this point, we would like to bring Ryan Drew on up front to present the check to the Bensonville Youth Coalition and to be accepted by Village President Frank DeSimone. Ryan's been a leader. We've had future conversations about future events. He's expressed an interest in being more involved. So, we thank him for his donation tonight, but for his time and generosity as well.
Ryan, do you want to say anything? Go ahead.
Just kind of brief, we've partnered up with Bensonville over the last couple of years doing some stuff and staying in town and building the building, and you know, we definitely know that we're not here without the town and the village and everybody else. So, we're committed to excel and try to be more a part of things like Be Well and the Youth Coalition and the town. And my owner, Bill Hardigan, he's definitely, he pushes these things. You know, it's not just about doing business, not only good business, but being a part of, you know, the lives and families that, you know, kind of get us to where we are. So, with our successes, it's given us a lot of opportunities. So, but yeah, I just want to thank Bob. He's been a fantastic partner and future partner with some other stuff that we're gonna probably hopefully plan on doing too. So, thank you guys very much.
Thank you. I'll take a quick picture here and get that up on our website and social media for you. I do want to say thank you. It's great to share in your company's prosperity. We've been longtime partners in some economic development agreements, and we hope to extend those deals further, and we love seeing you give back to the community.
Can we have the record reflected? Trustee Lomax has arrived.
Trustee Lomax has arrived at six forty.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to public hearing two thousand eighteen annual budget. We will now open the public hearing in the village's two thousand eighteen annual budget. The annual budget must be adopted before the beginning of the village's fiscal year. The annual budget has been available for public inspection since October twenty-sixth. The two thousand eighteen annual budget and community investment program totals fifty-seven million eight hundred sixteen dollars... Eight hundred sixteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars. If any person would like to speak during the public hearing on the village's two thousand eighteen annual budget, I ask that you please approach the podium and state your name and comment. Seeing none?
I will say that the budget has been available for inspection here at Village Hall, and I don't see any public comment.
So, at this time, this will conclude the public hearing on the village's two thousand eighteen annual budget, and it is now closed. We will proceed with the regular order of business. We will move the public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name. Do we have public comment?
Yes, we have two. Mr. Paul DeMichael and...
My name is Paul DeMichael. I live at seventeen W. two seventy-five Rodak Lane. I come here tonight to present you with a petition which reads as follows. Petitions for public parking. We, the undersigned, being local business owners and customers of Bensonville, do not want our Green Street and Center Street diagonal parking converted to parallel parking. The accomplishing, accompanying loss of spaces would be catastrophic to our retail business. This couldn't be more timely because you're talking about applying a grant for beautification projects in the south, and it's fortunate that you're getting feedback from the citizens at this time, how they feel about this. We've, we stopped here. We got two hundred and thirty-three signatures tonight. We got more we didn't collect. But you're getting feedback before you really start planning, so it's to your benefit to use it. This is how the residents feel. One of the big advantages that Bensonville's had is the diagonal parking. I see more cars there with Elmhurst vehicle stickers on it that come here because the parking's easier. You take that away, and I don't care how pretty you make the street. Nobody's gonna come here.
We also have Colleen from Hair Shapers?
Hi, how are you?
Good.
I want to first thank you for all the help that you gave us in beautifying our stores downtown. That's the first time in forty years that I was ever approached to help, you know, really make it look nice. And I've always done it on my own before and kept it nice. But with this parking, my clients have a hard time with diagonals, so imagine what they would do with the other. And the one lady goes, "Well, you'll have to come at five in the morning because otherwise I'm not gonna be able to park there." And some of them used to be clients in Elmhurst, like Paul said, and all we're trying to do is... I love the fact that Bensonville's on top of everything and that everybody's on board, and they want it to look the very best it can look. But for a lot of the clients, our town has a lot of elderly clients, and we have all ranges of ages that come in our salon, but the older clients really have a hard time walking from right in front of my salon into the door. So, I mean, it's imperative that the village knows. I mean, I talked to one young man last year about this very same thing, and he said, "Well, you gotta go with the times." I said, "Well, you want, you want to go with the times if it betters the community, but I don't see where that would better any of our businesses." Like, Music in the Park, people love it. We ended up closing on Wednesday night because we couldn't stay open because there was nowhere for people to park. We're okay with that because the clients like it. Everyone likes it. It's very, a nice addition to our town. And even people that go through on the train, they say, "Oh, that looks like so much fun." I said, "Yeah, the village is on top of it. They want everybody to be happy." But with this parking, really please consider not to change that diagonal parking. Even when you put in front of Joe's office, Stordo's, you put more parking over there. It really helped us as well because we run out of parking. Luckily, the credit union, you know, we moved, that moved, so the fellows that are in there are now parked behind, and so that is, creates a little more parking, but that will take away spots. And so, I'm all with you on anything we can do to help improve the area, but really please consider not making it diagonal, I mean, parallel parking because I don't see how that will benefit anybody. So, that's my, my take on it, and anybody that ever wants to stop by and talk about it, I'm, I'm open for it, okay? We have lots of signatures, and, and people are counting on us to be their voice, and that's why we're here. So, thank you very much.
Well, this is a dovetail knot, Colleen. Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate your continued support. Just last week, the mayor hosted, just internally with us staff, a kickoff meeting for how we're gonna engage the public on designing the south side of the streetscape. So, we've got a full plan of open houses and outreach and talking to you guys, getting your input, and so we can incorporate that. So, I appreciate the signatures. We would've come around to you, but you beat us to it, so thank you so much.
That's it? That's all for public comment?
Yes.
This will conclude our public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the October twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen board meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any modifications to the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries and minutes are approved. The next item of business is to approve the warrant in the amount of four million, five hundred, nine thousand, two hundred forty-nine dollars, thirty-seven cents. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
You have a motion.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion about, on the warrant? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the warrant has now been approved. Moving on, we have no items on the consent agenda this evening. Community and Economic Development Committee ordinance approving a conditional use permit currency exchange for the applicant N. Beal Express Illinois located at four sixty-nine West Irving Park Road. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
You have a second.
There being a motion, motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, point of order, just for our viewers at home, we've got a litany of things ahead of us to vote on. So, previous to this meeting was the committee meeting, which there was significant discussion on all these items. Because it's the end of the year, we're renewing a lot of annual contracts, so all, and final action will be taken, so roll call vote will be required for all of these items. So, just so everyone's aware of what's going on, we're not just flying through these. We had a good discussion with some of these items before.
So, please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance has been approved. Number two, ordinance approving a conditional use permit, smoke shops for the applicant Second City Vapes located at two twenty-nine West Grand Avenue Suite B. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
This motion carries and the ordinance is now approved. Number three, ordinance for a variance signage for the applicant Los Buenos Diaz located at two twenty-four West Green Street, Bensonville. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion? There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Number four, ordinance approving variances, parking and transition strip for the applicant A. and B. and C. Architects located at four hundred Country Club Drive. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance amending a text amendment to the village code to amend the definitions of truck stop and motor vehicle service station. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Number six, resolution authorizing the village manager to obtain a contract proposal for the sale of surplus real estate on Brookwood and Pleasant Streets as well as adjacent rights of way. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Moving on to finance, an ordinance adopting the two thousand seventeen tax levy for the village of Bensonville, DuPage and Cook Counties for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand seventeen, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I will interject. These weren't discussed at committee, so I'll let Ahmet explain what the tax levy is because we'll be voting on the tax levy as well as the budget. Mr. Thacker?
Mr. President and member of the board, what we have in front of you today is our two thousand seventeen levy ordinance. Property tax is always levied one year after, so two thousand seventeen property tax will be paid by all the residents and businesses in two thousand eighteen. And our two thousand seventeen property tax has, will, we are asking twenty-two thousand dollar more than two thousand sixteen levy. That's point forty-two percent more. Overall, our capped fund levy is going up by two percent, but our debt service levy is being reduced by fourteen point fifty-eight percent. So, at the end of the day, we also have received the data from Edison Township that we have two point one million dollar in new construction this year that will be added to our EAV. So, two hundred thousand dollar house paid six hundred and eleven dollar in taxes in two thousand sixteen, but because the EAVs are going up by eight percent per Edison Township, the two thousand seventeen tax for the two hundred thousand dollar house will be reduced to five hundred and eighty dollar and ninety-three cent.
Payable to the village.
Payable to the village.
Yeah, payable to the village. The total property tax might be six thousand dollars or so, but we get ten point thirty-seven percent of total property tax. Rest goes to schools, colleges, public libraries, and all that stuff. And for seniors, two thousand sixteen tax were a five hundred and sixty-one dollar for a two hundred thousand dollar house for the village. That will be reduced to five hundred and thirty-three dollars. So, that's a good news for us at the end of the day, and we are asking for a modest increase of twenty-two thousand dollar. And would like to answer any question if you have it.
Is there any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Number two, an ordinance adopting the annual budget for the village of Bensonville for the fiscal year commencing January first, two thousand eighteen, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Mr. Thacker?
So, it's the second step of the budget. So, we have in front of you guys the total budget for the village of Bensonville for two thousand eighteen is fifty-seven million, eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollar, nine ninety-two. Out of fifty-seven million, nine point one million dollar will be used for the debt service to pay the current debt service that we have. Sixteen point eight million dollar will be used for the capital improvement plan, so that will be invested throughout the town for various capital projects that we are going to do. And thirty-one point seven million dollar will be used for the operation of the village. And we had two sessions on, in the month of October where we had discussed this budget in detail. And at the end of the day, we are trying to cut our operating expense, and we have been successful in doing that. And a few items here from the state. State has tried to balance their budget by reducing the share of income that we get from the state. So, some of the revenue that we receive from the state, like LGDF and other shared revenue are under the attack. So, we are going to get ten percent less income tax from the state at the end of the day, and that amount for us is a hundred and eighty thousand dollar. But we have asked our department heads and all the departments to kind of like look at their budget, and they did a good job, and we were able to find the savings, and we also have done the efficiency and effective, effectiveness analysis throughout the village, and we were able to balance our budget. So, it's a balanced budget. That means the operating income were sufficient enough to pay for the operating expense. We also had two point eight million dollar worth of carryforward projects from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen. That means those projects were budgeted in two thousand seventeen. But since the, we, we have not received invoices from the state for those projects, or the project is still going on, those projects will be finished in two thousand eighteen. So, at the end of the day, it's a balanced budget, and we would recommend to approve. If you have any question, please let us know.
To piggyback on that, I'm very proud of this budget and very proud of the work that Ahmet and Sharon have done, as well as the board through all those budget hearings that I know are difficult to get through and somewhat complicated. This is a budget where even from a tax from the states on our budget, through rising costs, through union contracts, we've been able to keep our costs down, to keep delivering those important services, those recreation programs, those capital improvement projects, police on the street, we're able to keep all those services going through tightening our belt wherever we can. I do want to thank the leadership team. They are, as I mentioned before, they're accepting zero, well, they're getting zero percent raises this year. And that's tough for anyone because everyone knows expenses go up every year, but they've really put themselves into this budget, made themselves a part of the village and a part of the budget. So, I want to thank them. I want to thank the board for all your hard work, all your questions, late-night emails that you've shot over to us. And if you have any questions, we're here to answer them.
I also want to thank all of the team here. I mean, it was, it was rough, and we also were able to add senior programs too. Absolutely. Which was, was huge for the senior community. I know we worked hard. I know we argued and fought and screamed and yelled, but at the end of the day, it's for the residents. And I think they're gonna be proud of this budget. I think the seniors are gonna be proud of the services that we're gonna add to them and a few other things down the road. But thank you guys for coming out. I know it was during playoff time as well, so that was rough. But we, we got it done. We did a good job, and I'm proud of everybody here in the village. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? Can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Number three is a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a blend and extend agreement with Constellation New Energy Incorporated. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. We have no report in the police department moving on the public works. Resolution authorizing the execution of a contract extension to Crystal Maintenance Services Corporation for the janitorial services at the police and emergency management headquarters in the not-to-exceed amount of twenty-six thousand, four hundred thirty-eight dollars. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second? There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number two is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Morton Salt Incorporated for the purchase of five hundred tons of bulk rock salt in the not-to-exceed amount of twenty-three thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Stereo. Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I was trying to beat Trustee Lomax.
No discussions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number three is a resolution authorizing a shortlist of professional engineering firms for roadway design, wastewater design, stormwater design, and residential engineering services. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second? There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number four is a resolution supporting submission of an application to the Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, for funding under the two thousand eighteen Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program, ITEP. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number five, resolution authorizing the execution of GIS consortium services, service provider contract with municipal GIS Partners Incorporated for the two thousand eighteen calendar year in the not-to-exceed amount of eighty-one thousand, nine hundred seventy-eight dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number six is a resolution authorizing the execution of a one-year contract extension with Winkler's Tree Service Incorporated for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Parkway Tree Pruning Program in the not-to-exceed amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there, there being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Penacola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number seven is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Steve Piper and Sons the execution of a contract with Steve Piper and Sons for the 2018 Parkway Tree Removal and Stump Grinding Program in a not-to-exceed amount of $20,000. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Do you have a motion?
Do I have a second on the motion?
Do you have a second?
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena-Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number eight, resolution authorizing the execution of a one-year contract extension with Lindahl Brothers Incorporated for sand and stone delivery and debris hauling in a not-to-exceed amount of $76,000. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Do you have a motion?
Do I have a second?
Do you have a second?
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena-Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.[1490.65]